We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the City Bloomington Council to order, please.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. If you would all please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millwood Lamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. And we're going to go ahead and start with public comment, just that everyone knows that our new practice is we would do public comment at every meeting that we -- a regular meeting where we're taking action. And each member of the public has up to three minutes. And we're going to start with Mr. Gary Johnson, who's in the audience. Thank you. And if you'd please come forward and just mention your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Gary Johnson. I'm an attorney in sound with offices at 202 South Eldorado Road.
Thank you.
There is before the commission tonight a recommendation to restructure the legal department. And I have concerns in regard to that that I'd like to share. The first is monetary. The proposal, as I understand it, would replace the in-house corporation council with a law firm out of Springfield that would bill the city at $175 per hour for two of the attorneys who would be assigned to this work, and other lawyers for the firm would bill at $200 per hour. If that firm were to devote 40 hours per week on average to city business, the annual bill would be a minimum of $350,000, which is far greater than the cost of having a full-time in-house counsel. Second concern would have to do with accessibility. The existing system would have a full-time in-house counsel who would be here, presumably resident, familiar with the structures and institutions and personnel of the city and its citizens. This proposal would have a part-time counsel out of an office, a primary office, 60-plus miles away. So the accessibility issue, I think, is important as well. And the third concern I have is whether a diligent investigation and research has been done in regard to this proposal. I see no evidence that there has been some proof or evidence that this proposal would benefit the city or its citizens. At the very minimum, I would suggest that personnel from other cities of our size who have tried this type of arrangement would be interviewed and their input sought. So I would be particularly concerned about those three items and ask the council to keep those matters in mind as this presentation is discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, Carl Woodward, please come forward. You know the routine, just state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Carl.
Pardon me for my dress, but I didn't have time to go change. As you all know, my name's Carl Woodward. I'm at 1707 Clearwater Avenue. And I'm here tonight, I've been trying to get two questions answered, two numbers, for two years, and have failed. Your staff, your employees, won't respond. As Mr. Fazini well knows, when the Board of Directors, which is what I consider you folks up here, wants something, the employees of the company need to do it. Either in Bloomington or in government, it isn't that way. I've tried for two years. I asked for two numbers. You folks all saw the email, and I'm sure you might get inundated with emails. I wasn't expecting any of you to try to do it, but I've tried. Directly, I've talked to your staff. I want to know how much was paid last fiscal year against the hundred-and-some million dollars that you folks sitting at this table have allowed to happen. I think you would want to know the number. So there's two questions here. Does somebody in the city know it and they don't want to let people know? Or are they so incompetent they don't know what the number is? I guarantee you, Mr. Fazini, if it was at his bank, would have known. This reflects on you as a group. Am I here to insult you? No, but if I end up doing it, I don't care. I'd like to see you folks become responsible. I want to know two numbers. No one knows? You all should be embarrassed. All of you should know it. I've asked face-to-face and with emails for three months, and I get no response. Defend that. Who's the customer for the city? The citizens. Shouldn't you ask, as long as they're reasonable questions? Don't you folks want to know what these pension numbers are? If you don't realize you should know them, you shouldn't be up sitting up here. Do you folks have standards for your employees, at least the management employees? Because I've dealt with three or four-year department managers, and they're A-plus people. You're lucky to have them. So some are super, some are irresponsive, don't respond. Is that okay with you folks? I think it must be. If you're going to be the counsel to run the city, run the city. Don't sit back and just -- I know all of you are smart, but most of you aren't necessarily have the skill set to be doing what you're doing. Why do you allow data to be hidden from us citizens? I've tried for two years. I want two frickin' numbers. You give me the phone and tell your managers to talk to me, I'll have the numbers within a few minutes. It's that tough. I'd just like to see you, see that the city management team, all of it, not part of it, is responsive to you and the citizens. And I'd sure like to have those numbers some year. That's all I have. I'm sorry if I insulted anybody. I'm trying to get your attention, and it's obvious I've failed for three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. And we'll go forward with Richard Baxa. Please come forward. And again, would you, for the record, state your name and address?
My name is Richard Baxa. I live at 408 North Linden Street, Bloomington. The purpose of my being here tonight is to discuss the Miller Park tank, which is the object of a ceremony coming up this Saturday. Now, there's a lot of disagreement about the origin of the tank, but there's no disagreement about its rarity. Everyone's in agreement about that. Now, federal war relics like the Miller Park tank have federal guardianship in perpetuity, which makes the tank, in effect, a federal landmark, which means that no one has the right to do anything they want to do with it, including something dumb like welding a pipe onto it, which is the condition it's in now. In conclusion, there've been a number of military history museums down through the years that have tried to acquire this vehicle. The pity is that they were not successful. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next, Alton Franklin. You also know the routine, name and address. Thank you.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. Thing I wanted to bring up, there was a thing a while back that any of the other old dusty folks in here might remember called Iran-Contra. I say that not to bring up that particular issue, but because of a phrase that was developed at that point. And it actually segues from what Carl had to say. That's plausible deniability. Quite frankly, I'm getting fed up with it. It's like, well, we don't know, so we just keep on going with what we're doing, regardless of how fast we're pushing the accelerator while we're going downhill headed for a brick wall. We have addressed certain things and done everything except give them substance, except to bring about their fruition. I was told that we were, and I think we were all told, that the positions we were looking at were -- that were put on the wish list, if you will. We're not going to come about. However, in this Sunday's paper, which I hold in my little nicotine-stained hands here, there's 12 full-time positions for the city of Bloomington. Everything from an assistant city manager all the way down to sports staff five. But there's not too many snuffies there. It all seems to be what I would term at least mid-level management. Folks, we've already got a hell of an issue with pensions. I think I've talked enough about that that most everybody is aware of my thoughts regarding that. I guess we want to try and bring our non-police and fire pension issue up and make it worse. Because that's what we're doing. We're adding to the mess that's already there. And the reason why we're adding to it is because we can say, "We don't know." Well, I am in wholehearted agreement with Carl. I think if you don't know, you need to find something else to do. And if you do know, you need to find something else to do. Because, simple point, in fact, that means you're just not telling the people who want to know. And we live in a society -- I served in two branches of our military, not for the sake of wearing a pretty uniform, but because I believe in the ideals, that I support the values, the traditions that we have. One of those is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we move next to recognitions and appointments. We have proclamation of June 9th, 2014, as Illinois Wesleyan University Men's Basketball Final Four Day. And I know we've got some people in the audience. Why don't you please come forward? I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I will have you introduce the gentleman who are with you. Proclamation, recognition of the 2013-2014 Illinois Wesleyan University Men's Basketball Final Four Team. Whereas, we are here to celebrate the achievements of Illinois Wesleyan University's Titans Men's Basketball Final Four Team. Whereas, the Titans Final Four Team achieved a 27-5 winning season, a record bested by only two other teams in the 105-year history of IDWU's men's basketball. And -- got a bunch of where-ases here. Whereas, the Titans won the College Conference of Illinois and Wisconsin Conference Championship for the second straight year, and ranked third in the nation in the final 2013-2014 NCAA Division III men's basketball poll. And whereas, the Titans Final Four Team reached the NCAA Division III playoffs for the fifth straight season, and 23rd overall appearance, where they hold the most tournament wins, and beat Webster University, Saint Norbert College, Calvin College, and Dickinson College to advance to the Final Four. And whereas, the Titans achieved the 2013-14 NCAA Men's Division III Final Four Tournament for the second time in the last three years before losing to the eventual national champion, University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. And whereas, the Illinois Wesleyan University Men's Basketball Final Four Team included head coach Ron Rose, assistant coaches David Feeney, Quincy Henderson, and Kelly Winter, athletic trainer Adam Kelly, and players Nick Anderson, Ryan Coyle, Victor Davis, Bryce Dolan, Eric Dorch, Mike Marietti, Michael Mayberger, Brian Nelms, Jordan Nelson, Dylan Overstreet, Trevor Sebring, Pat Sotomay, Andy Stempel, Andrew Zymnik -- actually, this is foreign student of mine, I shouldn't have his name down properly here. And Brady Zimmer. And whereas, the team exemplified hard work and team spirit and continued the strong tradition of Titan athletic success, therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June 9th, 2014, as Illinois Wesleyan University Men's Basketball Final Four Day, and a pride -- a day of pride and celebration by the entire community of Bloomington, Illinois. Congratulations. And if you could introduce yourself, coach, and then the others.
My name's Ron Rose. I'm the men's basketball coach at Illinois Wesleyan. We thank you for this honor. With me today is Pat Sotomay and Dylan Overstreet. Both will be seniors next year at Illinois Wesleyan. And Trevor Sebring, who will be a sophomore.
Great. And I have lots of proclamations here for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all again. And we're going to move right along to our consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda that any members of the council would like to see removed? Alderwoman Schmidt.
I'd like to remove 7R. It's an Illinois Wesleyan request. I would like to recuse myself.
Okay. Anything else that is removed? Okay, it would -- oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Lauer?
Yeah, I -- and maybe we don't have to remove it. It just seems a little bit out of place to discuss the munis issue in length after we vote on 7D. So I'd really like to consider pulling it and tabling it until after the discussion so we all have a little bit better understanding.
The only difficulty that we have is just in terms of procedures. We can pull this from the consent agenda, and I should maybe look to my -- our corporate counsel. Can we have a suspension of the rules and then consider it after the munis discussion? Okay. Well, in the short run, let's have you pull that. Item seven, which -- I'm sorry.
Pull 7D.
7D?
The various munis modules.
Okay. Let's do that, and then we will ask for a motion for suspending the rules to consider this until after the munis project. Absolutely. Alderwoman Sterns.
7F.
7F. Okay. All right. Now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus items 7D, 7F, and 7R? So moved. Moved by Alderman Fazini.
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein. Okay. And --
Mayor, with regard to both the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. And now would everyone please vote on the consent agenda as amended? Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. Madam Clerk, there are no nays to announce. Now, we will move on in order to item 7D. And Alderman Lauer, again, if you will go ahead and make that motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we suspend the rules to have the discussion on the -- in the regular agenda on munis prior to the vote for 7D.
Okay. So we would consider it after item 8D on our regular agenda.
Correct.
So we would go to item 7D after item 8D. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion seconded by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any discussion? Okay. If everyone will go ahead and vote? Okay. Motion unanimously carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. All right. Now, moving right along, we move on to item 7F. Alderwoman Sterns.
Can this be discussed and voted on as part of the regular agenda? I mean, are we going to do that now? 7F. I guess I'm a little bit confused by what Alderman Lauer just did. Do I need to do the same thing?
No. We can vote specifically on yours. The reason why Alderman Lauer, we're in a sense asking for a suspension of the rules, which requires two-thirds vote, is because Alderman Lauer wanted us to have the munis information presented, if I'm saying you -- and that this would -- it would make more sense to vote on that item 7D after we've had the munis presentation. So but if you have specific concerns about 7F, then you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question would be for Mr. Hales regarding the -- this expenditure with Walker Consulting. Walker Consulting, is that correct, or construction?
Yes.
Because I'm just a little bit confused about exactly, you know, what we're getting here. Is this just the recommendation? Are they in charge of the RFPs going forward? Or what exactly are we paying for here to this firm?
We're paying for -- it's proposed. We enter into a contract to have Walker Restoration Consultants do a number of things. They will actually prepare the plans, the specifications, bidding documents, so that we can then let -- take bids for the actual repair of the Pepsi Ice Center garage. They'll help us in evaluating those bids, help in making recommendation. And then lastly, they'll also provide construction observation services during the construction period to help ensure that everything conforms with the plans. If any change orders are necessary, they'll advise on those as well. So it's the whole gamut, helping us get the project out to bid and then monitor it during construction.
Okay. Am I correct in that we already understand the sort of the structural flaw therein that we're dealing with? We already understand the flaw? Is that true?
Yes. They have identified what they believe to be the so-called design or construction defect. What they haven't prepared is how do you fix it? They've given conceptually what they think is going to be the fix, but that is in no shape or form in order to put it out for any kind of contract. So we need the detailed plans and specifications so contractors can submit a bid. Right now, our cost estimate is between 1.2 to 1.5 million. We're not going to know for sure until those bids come in, and the contractors, after reviewing the plans, looking at the structure, say, here's what they would bid to actually complete all the repairs.
So the disadvantage of going straight into the bid process would be?
Oh, you can't. There's no detailed plans, specifications to put out there. You know, you'd be going into a bid situation blind, and bidders would have nothing really to rely on that they could actually put together cost estimates as to what would nest -- what will have to be done, you know, to make the repairs.
Thank you. Just a side question, and this may not be directly, you know, and I apologize, but are we looking at the same considerations? Are we making the same kind of evaluation with the arena, the Coliseum construction itself, given that I think it was constructed in a similar manner and by perhaps the same firm? Not sure about that. But are we looking at all at the structural integrity therein just while we're doing all this?
I think, as I -- as I think I understand your question, as the individual from Walker Restoration Consultants, as well as Greg Meter, Special Outside Counsel, the construction design of the parking garage is different in many ways from the Coliseum and the precast panels that were erected. So, you know, they are -- the design work and what was designed for the -- the T-beams, double Ts in the parking garage are not anywhere similar to the type of tilt-up panels that were used in the Coliseum. So they're really two different entities, and hopefully that helps.
Okay.
That helps. And then I'll make the motion that we accept the 7F as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all right. Excuse me. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. All right. And now we move on to item 7R, and I believe Alderwoman Schmidt is going to recuse herself. This is a petition by Illinois Wesleyan University requesting approval of special use permit for a parking lot. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. Any discussion? Okay. Would everyone please vote? Okay. The motion carries eight to zero with Alderwoman Stern -- excuse me, Alderwoman Schmidt abstaining. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. Now, we move right along to our first item of our regular agenda, item 8A. And we've got two pieces to this. There's a text amendment regarding the structure of the city legal department in agreement with Sterling Northrup, Hannah Cullen, and Cochran to provide legal services. There is -- we've got, again, these are our targets, legal services, structure, and text amendment is 10 minutes. Legal services agreement itself, 10 minutes, so approximately 20 minutes is our target for this discussion. We did discuss this because some of -- We did discuss this because some of this had to do with staff and personnel evaluation in our executive session, and now we're in open session to mention this. Just, there were some, a few emails, I think, and some misconceptions out there, but I think I'm, before I turn it over to the city manager, I want to make it clear that this, this came from the city manager. This was a proposal from the city manager, not the, the firm or Mr. Jeff Jurgens. This was a proposal to the council and the, the total restructuring would actually save the city somewhere, the estimate would be somewhere around 100 to $150,000 in total legal fees, because it's, it's a little more complicated, I think, than people may have understood perhaps from the article in the panograph. And I will turn this over to Mr. Hales. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just give a little background. As many of you might recall, back in November and December, after the departure of Todd Greenberg, one thing I was, needed to pursue is who could we bring in, both as an interim corporate counsel, as well as how to proceed with the ultimate selection of permanent corporate counsel. And just so you know, through my career, I've worked probably mostly with outside legal counsel, who has been both city attorney and providing many of the services. I've also dealt with in-house legal counsel, and I have my own preferences, and I'll get into some of those per se, but what we were able to do, after I talked with many different law firms, individual attorneys, so on and so forth, I was very fortunate to, to have discussions with Jeff Jurgens. He works for a, a law firm, Sorley Northrup, Hannah Cullen, and Cochran, who the city of Bloomington has had some interaction with over the last five years. Some of you may recall some interaction we had, having them review some of the legal work. Jeff also has a, a history of working for a while with Ansel and Glink, a very renowned law firm in Illinois that does a lot of municipal law experience. As I started to focus in on asking Jeff to serve as interim corporate counsel, I went to the law firm of Clark Baird Smith out of Chicago, and I had them draft a legal agreement so that we could engage Jeff Jurgens as interim corporate counsel. I think that's important because the same agreement is basically the mere identical to what I'm bringing to you tonight, but with some changes. The scope of services has changed a little bit and some other things, but the original agreement was prepared by Clark Baird Smith. Maybe while I'm on that topic, the agreement you have tonight was reviewed by Kathy Orr. As many of you know, she does a lot of TIF legal work for us, and she also does a lot of economic development agreement review. I asked her to review this agreement, and we incorporated some of her changes. So this is an agreement that actually was prepared by another firm, reviewed by another firm recently, and we engaged Jeff. During the last four or five months too, I was also pursuing the recruitment as another alternative of a permanent corporate counsel that possibly could be in-house as well. One thing I found in talking with many of the recruiters, you can always find a attorney when you go out and hire. What is very, very difficult in this day and age is to find a great attorney that has strong depth in municipal law experience. This is especially, and because of the very nature, sometimes the complexity of the legal issues we deal with in the public sector, most very good, great municipal attorneys usually are not looking to change currently where they reside and who are they working for. But as I continue to look at both these alternatives, one thing not only I found, but our, our directors and other staff, I know Mayor Renner and many of you, is that Jeff Jurgens has really performed in a very phenomenal way. We have seen not only greater productivity in getting additional legal work done in a cost-efficient, effective manner, we've begun to address what is really a legacy of many, many old agreements that just have never been addressed, brought to closure. We have a great need to institute a number of policies, procedures, have a very strong legal department that will go to bat for the city when developers or other people we contract with don't follow through and perform. So, one, I have really admired the performance and what we have seen in the way of what Jeff Jurgens has brought to this particular job as interim corporate counsel. I am of the belief that our interests can best be served, we can achieve significant value by contracting with Sorley Northrup, not only for the services of Jeff Jurgens, but also Angela Fianz Jimenez. As you may or may not know, Angela also comes with about 10-plus years of municipal law experience, most recently in the city of Springfield. She was one of the lead attorneys that dealt with a lot of employment law issues, which in this day and age, I can't understate how important it is to have an attorney who can advise you not only on public safety, but across the board of employment law with 11 bargaining units, and with the retirement later this year of Emily Bell, we have a greater need to have an attorney who can help us with collective bargaining issues, which are getting more and more complex, detailed, and so forth. These two individuals will basically equate to one full-time equivalent position. Jeff will be here approximately three days a week, Angela two days a week. They, together with our two in-staff attorneys, Rosalie Dodson and George Boils, will be really ramping up and raising the bar on the legal services support to our departments, to the mayor, to the council, and I, again, don't want to understate how important that is. As many of you know, over the past year, we've been trying to do an assessment of the importance of improving our internal customer service, not only our outside customer service. And one of the great needs we have internally is to help our departments, especially police, fire, public works, and others, to help give them good legal advice, to help in drafting agreements, agreements that need to be much stronger, much more detailed, much more specific, much more in anticipation of what can go wrong in relationships between the city and the parties we're entering into contracts with. That is a serious need, it's a critical need, and we've begun to see great success in Jeff and his assistance in, in many of these areas. As I've looked at the cost comparison, I think one of the great values that comes in entering into a contract of this nature is you're not just hiring people right out of college or with very limited municipal law experience. These two individuals have tremendous, strong depth in municipal law experience. They're coming, hitting the ground running, they have a high degree of expertise, competency in this area. Our in-house attorneys can, can benefit by their counsel, their mentoring, and, and working with them on many of these very complex projects going forward. One of our objectives in working with Jeff this next year and Angela is to reduce our reliance on and need for outside legal counsel. As many of you know, some of the rates that we've had to pay in the past, since November for Chicago law firms, has sometimes been over $300 an hour. The rates for Jeff and Angela are $175 an hour. We will not pay for any vacation time, sick time, leave time, et cetera, et cetera, and we don't get into long-term pension liability risk. And I, as I shared with you recently, and when you look at pensions, you can always look at the year-to-year, annual contributions, but what, what is very hard to get a handle on is those long-term financial risks that the employer always undertakes, because when the markets go through a recession, when expected rate of returns are not achieved, who has the risk? It's not the employee, it's the employer that has to make sure, you know, those things are covered. This is a great example, I think, of where we will benefit by having a so-called hybrid example of some outside contracting, but also some in-house. So I think overall, this will provide a great cost and expense stability. I do want to emphasize that we have a lot of pin-up demand, a lot of outside, or projects that need some critical help of Jeff and Angela to help bring to some closure, but I see some very good possibility of long-term cost stability in this particular contract. With that, I just, once again, I feel based on my experience with other firms in my other careers, Sorley Northrup has a great reputation in central Illinois, they're close to Bloomington, they worked with many other municipal clients, and as we begin to see increased development activity, it is critical that we have someone of their caliber, the depth of expertise, the competency, to help serve our increasingly complex legal needs. And I'm very pleased tonight to recommend that you do two things. One, approve the ordinance, text amendment that will allow the legal services to be provided by contract as well as in-house, and then also to approve the agreement with Sorley Northrup, Hannah Cullen, and Cochran, to allow Jeff Jurgens and Angela Fianz Jimenez to serve as our two principal attorneys there and to take the interim from Jeff's title and make him permanent corporate counsel as per this agreement. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just also to clarify that, that if we don't like what we're getting at any point, we can, we can get out of it.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And you don't, yep.
All right, questions, comments here? We, I'll kind of take these, we've spent about a little over half our time, but obviously we, we need to talk about this, so if there are any comments, I'd like to.
Do we need a motion?
Actually, let's go ahead and do the motion. Thank you. I've been remiss.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, and correct me if I can't do this, item 8A, I and two Is, at the same time.
Well, actually, we, we need to take them separately.
I can do this.
We can do it as one motion?
Okay.
Okay. You're, you're making that we combine the ordinance, the text amendment change, and the agreement, and you're making that motion for both of those at once? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fazini. Okay, now, excuse me, who would like to speak to these items? Alderwoman Sterns, anyone else? Lauer? Fazini? Okay, we, oh, and Milowampway. All right, so start with Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to comment on this, first and foremost, I agree, I agree with so much that city manager has said, first and foremost, that Mr. Jurgens has, to me, really been an outstanding municipal attorney, and certainly deserves to remain here, because I, I've seen a lot of professionalism and expertise that the city really, truly needs, and I do think that this could solve a backlog of, of ordinance violations, in fact, could even restructure the whole ordinance violation system and get into a administrative review, which I, I do favor, because it, it saves a lot of red tape, so to speak. My concern, though, is one, it's just, just structural, it's just something that I would always be concerned about, and that has to do with the, with the fact that we've done this very, very quickly. In fact, I really just, I kind of saw it in the paper and have tried to understand this for a while, and the fact that there was no request for quotes or an RFQ put out, and that just concerns me greatly. And probably, I, I'm sure this will pass, and I would welcome these two individuals, highly welcome them into the city, but the lack of a request for quotes and the lack of going out and making this project open and inviting other firms to quote and to look at this, and I, I just, that to me is just very concerning. So, thank you.
Alderman Lauer.
Yeah, I, I echo her concern with, with the lack of shopping just a little bit, although I also want to let the general public know that Mr. Jurgens and his firm do come highly recommended. We did do a bit of background outside the city. I did some background my, on my own. Friends and constituents have recommended he and his firm even prior to his service in January, and I also am highly impressed, we're, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck as far as I'm concerned. One of the things that I would like to see, though, is a monthly and a quarterly accountability report in terms of the expense and the projects that, that have been worked on, and then a forecast going forward for both a month and maybe a quarter as well. I think it's just a good management tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fazini and then Milowampway.
After reviewing everything, I, I like the fact that there's less cost, but you know what? That's secondary to me. What I really like is the level of professionalism increase that this firm brings to our city. So we're going to get better advice, and we're probably going to save a lot more money than we would have under the previous administration. I also like the fact that there's no pension, vacation, sick leave, et cetera, and that we're going to have less outside legal counsel needs, because his firm has about 35 other attorneys that we can go to and have already gone to. Plus, the ease of changing, if we decide this isn't working, is a lot easier than if we hired somebody full-time with a pension and all the benefits. To get out of that would be difficult. To get out of this, I think all it takes is we call Jeff and say, I think we're done, and, and we're done. That's significant to me. And the issue that the previous two aldermen brought up about the RFQ, I, I'd like the city manager to explain a little bit about why we didn't do an RFQ, because I think he did more work than an RFQ would have benefited us, and, and David, if you could explain that, I think that might help the public understand why we didn't do an RFQ, because I think it's appropriate that we didn't in this case.
Okay, the, the city manager, and then we'll get to you, Alderman Milowampway. Yes.
Yeah, I, I think anytime you're talking about professional services, it becomes much more problematic. It is so easy to put out a bid when you're just looking for quotes, you know, the cost of a commodity, you know, and, and those comparisons are very easy. It is much, much more difficult to, to evaluate reputation, to evaluate character, integrity, and what I chose to do is spend a lot more time checking with people behind the scenes, not in an open public document, but to find out what has been their track record, what is their character like, what has, what is their integrity, what have they been able to produce, what have been the results? These are people who have been willing to speak privately, confidentially, to share with me the, the strengths and weaknesses of a numerous number of people. So, you know, and, and even in talking with some of the attorneys locally, again, to try and find someone with good, strong municipal legal experience locally, there really is a dearth of those types of candidates. So I thought that was much more effective in, in making sure that who we, who I brought to you had that kind of private vetting to get into much more confidentiality, which you never get in a public document and things of that nature.
Okay, Alderman Milowampway.
Sure, thank you. And this question is for David or, or Jeff, but could you talk a little bit about some of the safeguards that you would have in place to make sure we do not have cost overruns?
Certainly, be willing to do so. One, I have been, over the last couple of months, reviewing with Jeff our existing expenses, especially the expenses this past year. That has been part of our discussion. How can we avoid some of those costs going forward? So there's been a lot of looking back, what has been some of those outside costs, how can we bring in-house, you know, again, it's not 100%, but as many of those as we can, and some discussion of going forward, how can we, with a very large workload, try to contain and manage those costs much better, you know, going forward? So as, each month, we'll be reviewing the costs. We're, we're trying to phase out many of those outside contracts, and of course, some of those are still in progress, but that's going to be our intent. It will take a while before some of these outside and very unusual cases we've had this past year come to conclusion, but we will be monitoring, managing, and looking to those costs very closely each and every month, so that we can come back and report that, as I indicated, you know, overall, our goal is to stay within budget for this next year, and we will be doing everything we can to do so, if we can. And you've got to always keep in mind, you cannot always control the lawsuits you're going to have, the extraordinary legal expenses. going to have, the extraordinary legal expenses. So, those will be things, when we see something that is, you know, could really see a spike in legal expenses, we'll be coming back to you and explaining those, things that are outside of our control. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Thank you. I have one more question. One of the things that I think is always beneficial in having people in-house is to be able to preserve institutional memory. And so, in this case, we're hiring people outside. And in terms of institutional memory, I know we'll have some people in-house, but, you know, the two who will be working on, you know, different cases sometimes develop ways for them to, you know, to be effective or how they work on different cases. So, how are they going to work to preserve that institutional memory so that when there is a change, hopefully not for a long time, but if there is a change, you know, we can pass along that institutional memory?
First, I'd say institutional memory, while maybe important, is not a substitute for a high-performing, a results-driven, creative, innovative manager going forward. You could have just continued on with the status quo five and a half years ago and accept the institutional experience that you had. You chose not to do that. Sometimes, I think that Bloomington is in that category. Sometimes, when you need to make significant changes, raise the bar, and you're looking for people that are not satisfied with the status quo but are looking for and are driven by continuous improvement and trying to revamp and right-size and improve policies, procedures, improve the overall culture and the view of how we do work, then, you know, institutional memory, I'm sorry, you know, doesn't carry any weight. And I think, as I've spoken to you before, I'm looking for Mr. Jurgens and Angela to truly raise the bar on the legal, quality of legal services we need in this community. And it is not the time to bring on amateurs or people right out of college. I think this is the time where we need the strength and the depth, irregardless. But you've got to keep in mind, their institutional memory is not just in one community, that's in many. That's working, you know, and that is invaluable, as we've been finding lately with people like Sue McLaughlin, Frank Kaler, and others. It's amazing, some of the new ideas that these people are bringing to the table about how we can do our job better, quicker, faster, cheaper by learning of how others are confronting the same problems that we are at this time.
And just to clarify that, I mean, we are keeping the existing staff, and I deal with George Boyle, for example. George Boyle and Rosa Lee are still going to be on staff. And George, I deal with most directly, of course, because of liquor issues several times a week often. And when I bring up a bar, I mean, George knows, "Oh, yeah, well, back in 2009, we did this, 2009, then we did this, 2012, we did this." So, we will have that, the institutional memory as well.
Yeah, and I'm talking about the institutional memory going forward, you know? I mean, we have to find a way to capture, you know, their great work and some of the things that they do. So, I, you know, I wasn't necessarily talking about-
So, you're not talking about just today, but as we go forward?
Right. As we go forward, I think that's also something that we need to make sure we do not lose because they're bringing something new to the table.
Right. Great. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Oh, Alderman Fazini, and last word or last question, comment?
Last word. What we did learn is that Jeff has instituted meetings with the staff, and that's important because then they can share institutional knowledge with each other. But he also will be meeting with the City Manager and the Mayor on a regular basis. So, I think it's going to see up and down the institutional knowledge going forward.
Okay. All right. Well, if everyone will go ahead and vote, a yea vote is for both the ordinance text amendment and the agreement. A nay would be to oppose them. There are eight ayes and one nay. Madam Clerk?
The nay vote is Alderman Sterns.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Pardon me. Moving right along, we go to item 8B, the Communication Center Console Upgrade and Fire Department Starcom Subscriber Equipment. And this is an agreement with Motorola Solutions. And I will go ahead and turn it over to the City Manager. And if you want to clarify this position or this situation, excuse me.
Mayor and Council, we're recommending tonight that you approve this agreement with Motorola Solutions for a Communication Center Console Upgrade in the total amount of $842,607. As indicated in the backup report, the current console, which was purchased in 2005, is no longer, will, the Motorola stopped production of this particular model and coming within a very short period of time, by February 2016, or in that area, Motorola will no longer service nor provide maintenance service on these. I do have in the audience tonight Darren Wolf, our Communications Center Manager. Together, we also have David Lander with Motorola and Jacob Fever with ClearTalk. So, if there's any technical questions you have, I'm sure I have staff support to help answer any of the questions you might have on this particular motion and what the city's proposing to purchase.
Okay. Go ahead and start with the motion, see if there's a motion and a second before we begin discussion. Is there a motion and a second for this proposal?
I'll make a motion.
Move by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
A second?
A second by Alderwoman Painter. Okay. Who would like to speak to this issue? And we've got approximately 20 minutes budgeted for this. Alderwoman Schmidt first, Alderwoman Sterns, and Alderwoman Milowampe. Okay, so I would-
And Mayor, if I could, let me just ask Darren and our other guests, if you'd just come forward, just in case-
In case we've got some questions. My guess is, though, we're liable to do that, and Mr. Kimmerling, he's already on his way up, it looks like, our police chief. That's fantastic. Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and start with that in that order. We have Alderwoman Schmidt, then Sterns, and Milowampe.
Thank you. I have just a basic question, and it's a question that we continue to get all the time. Why are we not looking at rejoining MetCom? And we've heard pros and cons about having a second system as a good safety measure. I just would like to have some conversation about that and see where we are with that.
Okay. Just to clarify, I think we, the equipment is separate from sort of the structure, and then I think that's maybe some, what we can, you know, clarify.
It is, but obviously, as we continue to put money into something, we're going down a road that, you know, that kind of forces us not to have a conversation about MetCom. So, I'd like to-
Right. No, I understand.
Put that as background.
Yeah, just so that everyone understands, we, I was chairman of the Justice Committee and vice chair of this committee back in 2003, 2004, in the county board, when, much to our chagrin, everybody in McLean County was going on Starcom 21. But the city of Bloomington decided to spend millions of dollars on an outdated analog system, and they couldn't talk to everybody else. So, that was a bad move, I would say. I think history has shown that. The cost estimates were, by the previous City Manager, were way too rosy. I think we all knew that on the county board at that time. We were scratching our heads, but frankly, we heard, basically, we all looked at each other and said, "Okay." When we got a letter from the previous City Manager that was really nasty, dripping with condescension, we said, "This is a divorce, and we have to have it. They're going to be coming back on. They're going to have to." And here we are. And again, this is one of those situations that is frankly a mess from the past that we are, at this point, cleaning up. It was really most unfortunate. Again, that's a little bit of background information. I apologize. But if we can, if I can shift back to that point to see what other issues and other questions Aldermen and Women had, Alderwoman Sterns and then Milowampe.
Thanks. And I appreciate Alderwoman Schmidt bringing this up because indeed, we hear it often. And I think it's a great question, and a lot of the public is asking it. I've asked it many times, and I'm sure many others of you, as well, especially those who were on the City Council at the time that the city of Bloomington actually did leave MetCom. But here's a really, a couple of really simple questions. One is, does MetCom have this Starcom system? I assume they do. And do they have to do an upgrade, too? Are they upgrading, too?
Let me ask Darren Wolf. Would you come up and kind of answer that question?
Yes, MetCom will have to do the same upgrade to their system as well. They have chosen not to do theirs this year. They are going to be budgeting for theirs next year.
Oh, they've chosen not to do theirs this year?
They, because they have other expenses that they're working on this year, but they're doing theirs next year.
Sure. I understand.
There's approximately over 100 agencies in the state of Illinois that use the Centricom Gold Elite Console System. That's the piece of equipment that is becoming outdated as of February 2016. So, there's over 100 different agencies in the state of Illinois that have to go through the same upgrade process that we are proposing tonight.
Okay. And if I'm correct, Darren, maybe you can help me. The upgrade itself, which apparently is mandatory, is about 800, or I'm sorry, is about, how much is the upgrade itself? Around 600?
It's approximately 500,000 of the 800,000.
For the upgrade?
Correct.
Okay. And just curious, do you have any idea if MetCom is actually spending that much or more? I mean, you probably don't, you may not even know because it's not your-
They have more, they have more consoles than we do, so their cost would be more than ours.
And I'm curious, I mean, for anybody from Motorola, or you may well know, Darren, I mean, are we going to be doing this again in another five years? You know, I just, it's like, wow.
At this time, the platform that we're going to is the Motorola MCC 7500. It's an IP-based dispatch system. It is currently Motorola's state-of-the-art system. There is no end of life for it right now, and it is the system they're selling nationwide right now.
So, there's no end of life that we know of?
At this time, no.
But maybe there will be. But anyway, okay, thank you for that. Very clear answers. And then this, Darren, if you would, be so kind. On the rest of it, the 500 is for the upgrade. And then the rest of it, the 300 or so, is for the fire truck, is to put this in the fire trucks. What do we have now in our fire trucks, and what does Normal have now in our fire trucks? Help me.
Currently, we have a VHF system in our fire trucks, and this proposal is to upgrade the subscriber equipment to put the fire department on Starcom. So, that would involve purchasing mobile and portable radios and vehicular repeaters to bring the fire department onto Starcom. They would still maintain some of the VHF system because that's how they would talk on the scene of a fire or an accident. Normal currently does a system similar to what we're proposing, is that they have a Starcom talk group, and then they do their fire ground operations on VHF. That's what we're proposing, is to mirror a system similar to what Normal does right now.
Okay, so Normal already has it. Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you very much, Darren.
Okay. Then Alderman Milowampe did not want to follow suit. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Everyone will vote. A would be, now I will be, of course, in favor of the agreement. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, could we just have a little conversation about-
I'm sorry.
The big picture here.
I'm sorry. I didn't see the, your light on, and I had moved on in my brain. Sorry. I apologize for that. Yes. I will go ahead and turn it over to City Manager David Hales to clarify a little bit about the MetCom. I think part of it is, is we have to have a backup system anyway. That is, the region has to have a backup system, so its structural change wouldn't be terribly radical, even if we rejoined MetCom. Correct?
Yeah, that's, you know, we have since found out that if we were to rejoin MetCom, we would have to have a backup communication center that would have to almost mirror what we would have in an expanded MetCom. Previously, the so-called backup really wasn't a backup that met state law. It was very small, very inadequate. But as we've talked, even been down to Springfield and talked to the powers that be, we would have to prove to the state that our backup system would be sufficient so that if we had to move all the personnel from MetCom to this backup, we could continue to provide all those services, emergency, 911, even service requests, et cetera. That alone is going to necessitate that, again, if you do join together, rejoin, that we'll have to have a very sophisticated, you know, communication center that can, you know, start right up, and you move all your personnel and can immediately, you know, or very shortly, continue to operate. That is something new that we never had, even when we were with MetCom, having that capability.
It was just, what was it, the basement of the, of Normal City Hall?
Yeah, and I think it was their old, yeah, their old dispatch center. Secondly, I do want to just share with you again that we do have a study that is still in the process of being developed that looks at the pros and cons of the current separation two communication centers, the costs associated with that, and then also is being put in there, well, is there cost savings of being, moving back together into a joint? As soon as that's completed, in fact, I was just talking to Darren, I think that was nearing completion just before the budget, and with everything, we just haven't had a chance. So, later this summer, we'll be bringing to you that study, not only for our council but also to share with the Normal officials as well as the county. Secondly, I think it's important to point out that, you know, one of the questions that has to be resolved, to answer it is, even if we as a city had a desire to rejoin MetCom, would the county and the town allow us to rejoin them? We've got to keep in mind that when we left MetCom, it was really a financial hardship. We didn't take much away from that agreement. And as people that were here before my time, the costs associated with developing the system to meet our needs was very, very substantial. So, you know, there's that one. And even if they were willing to consider what would be the terms, the conditions, the governing policy, et cetera, et cetera. Now, all that being said, I've worked in cities where you've had joint communication centers that have served a half million population. But in many of those situations, you also had other communication centers that could immediately, you know, back up any kind of entity, in this case, in these large values, valleys, or up in the Chicago area, you have a lot of redundancy. Unfortunately, we don't have that in central Illinois. You can't just take a Peoria or champagne or a Springfield and immediately have them take over all our communications. So, it is unique there. But once again, I'm just, we will have that report to bring back and to share with you, and then see how the council would like to proceed with that information because we also want to share that with the town of Normal and the county. The one thing we have, I've been trying to do, together with the police chiefs we've had, is try to repair some of those bridges that were burned when we left because it was not, you know, a good separation. And we've been trying to repair that ever since.
On that note, I talk maybe about every third or fourth meeting I have with Chris Coos, and we talk about perhaps consolidating some of our efforts on the northeast part of Bloomington. There is still bad blood. They don't trust us. I don't mean Chris Coos. I mean, some of the line staff still don't trust the city of Bloomington based on this. And I know how traumatic it was from the standpoint on the county side. So, anyway, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Schmidt.
I just wanted to do a quick follow-up to make sure I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the reminder about this study. A backup, the backup system is mandated by the state, you're saying?
By state law, yes.
And this backup system is not just the hardware, software, but it's also personnel?
No, it's not personnel, but it's everything but personnel. So, again, if MetCom went down, you'd have to have the ability to move those people to a backup communication center. So, especially like if a tornado hit that. Our comm center would have to function until who knows when, you know, the original could be put back in service. So, that is something the current state officials are looking for, you know, if, and even as we have talked about what if we were to move back, what we've learned is they will want to make sure we have the facility to serve as the backup to move those trained personnel from the original to the backup system and continue to provide emergency communication services.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for moving to the vote.
Just very quickly, would it make any sense then, since MetCom's upgrading next year, for us to upgrade next year while we're getting this information together and back to the council?
Well, again, we're both upgrading, you know, to the Motorola. Motorola is the sole source provider of the infrastructure for Starcom. There is no one other than Motorola that these 100 agencies are buying into. However, however, what we're trying to do going forward is get greater consistency between what the two entities use. We have a software system that is different from MetCom. Eventually, I would- Eventually, I would like to see personally, we use the same software systems as well as everything else, so that if there was to be serious consideration of rejoining, you know, we're not operating two different software systems, which we are doing right now.
Right, but my question was about timing. While we're waiting for this report that you're talking about, while we're asking all these questions, would it make sense to upgrade next year, when we really have, when the deadline is?
Well, again, we're recommending we do it now, because the sooner, we don't want to be up against the deadline and go past that deadline and be in a situation where we could be passing, you know, the, the point of no return. And as we were looking at our capital request, it really made sense to do that this year, even with this, you know, making this purchase today. I think, Darren, it's going to take how many months, probably before everything's fully operational? Is that six to?
Yeah, we would, we would be looking at late this year, maybe late third quarter, early fourth quarter, by the time everything was done for both parts of this project.
If we move ahead and it's approved this evening?
Correct.
Okay. Other follow-up, Judy? Okay, anyone else? Okay, now, we can, and I did clear the results. I think a few people voted already. I cleared the results. Again, my apologies if you'd kindly vote on this now. I would be in favor of this agreement, of course. All right, the ayes, eight, and one nay. Madam Clerk?
The nay vote is Alderman Sterns.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to move on to item 8C, Request Approved Purchase of Technical Services Agreement from the National Development Council, the NDC, for the administration of the Department's Economic Development Office. And I, let me just see if there's a, a motion to approve in a second before I turn it over to the City Manager for a sec, for clarification.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter, second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Mr. Hales, you want to briefly clarify this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I think some of you have had the opportunity to meet Libby Al. She is the local representative who this past year has been assisting us as an official and representative of the National Development Council. As indicated in this backup report, NDC is a nonprofit community economic development organization that has been assisting cities throughout the nation. We have tried to put in here some of the very significant things they've accomplished, success they've had around the nation. But I think, coming back to Bloomington, one thing that we have really relied on the NDC is do some of the heavy lifting when we look at, and in a very technical way, evaluate the financial vetting of applicants who want to seek incentives from the city, whether they be property tax abatements, sales tax abatements, et cetera. You might recall that the 115 East Monroe, Ashley Furniture, recently some projects on Washington, all these have benefited not only from NDC's involvement in both the, the incentive policy, which the council has adopted, we've also benefited of them really evaluating and looking at the financial ability of these applicants to, to really proceed with their project. Plus, you might recall recently, we hope in the very near future to bring back to you another great asset and advantage of working with this company. And that is, we recently have been talking to them about the possibility of bringing from the outside some money to help fund through some very strategic loans, small business entrepreneurs, money that I'll have Justine talk about in just a minute. But again, it, it is a very valued service. I think several people went to Iowa City here a year or two ago, and I think you heard that one of the companies that they use to help provide extra expertise, consulting services, was NDC. Again, they're not a for-profit, they're a nonprofit. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Justine Robinson, if you'll come forward, just in case we get any questions the mayor council might have.
Actually, if I could start and ask if there are any questions of either Justine or Mr. Hales. Okay, start with Alderman Sterns, and then, okay, there we go. Sterns, Milawonbue, Lauer, and Schmidt. So Judy, go for it.
Thank you. So this is 60,000 for the year, 5,000 per month?
Yes.
Is that correct? I've got a lot of questions, but I'll try to condense it into just maybe a couple and see what other people want to, want to ask. Now, my understanding is that, you know, sadly, Justine is leaving us. Very sorry to hear that, Justine, wherever you are. But, and, and we also, we have the EDC that we, I believe, fund in the neighborhood of 90 to 100,000 per year. Is that right?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred, thank you. We did have Justine, and she's, she's now leaving us, which I don't believe, has anyone been hired, or are we simply planning to replace Justine?
We'll be, yeah, we'll be looking at, at, you know, bringing somebody in that can help serve as the future, the second economic development coordinator for the city.
So we have EDC, we have the economic development coordinator, is that correct? And then we're going to have this as well, in addition. Is that right?
Yes.
And, and this is for you, Justine. Now, my understanding, reading through this, is that this organization has already provided some services. You know, we've already re, so I'm curious, who's, who was paying, I mean, how did we pay for that? What they've al, you know, we've already used them for some consulting type thing. How did we pay for that?
Let me answer that. We build into the last year's budget funding for this organization, and that was contained in the budget as well. It's been on a month-to-month basis, so it has, we were trying, it was a pilot program to, you know, try them out, see if it's something we felt would have had some value. And based on that pilot program, we then decided we wanted to go to a full year, and we included this money in the fiscal year 2015 budget, which the council approved with this funding level.
And thank you. And how much did we actually budget last, I mean, how much did we end up paying the NDC last year? Do you have any, any idea?
I'd have to go to Justine, I can't recall.
It was the same cost per month at 5,000 a month, but I don't believe it was the entire year. I think it was perhaps nine or 10 months, but I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, so it isn't something like, we used them and just paid them a set amount, it was 5,000 a month for what we used, what we used them for? And it looks like they performed quite a, a few different services. And last year, was that the first time we ever used them?
It was, yes.
Okay, so before then, how did we go about some of these practices or some of these services?
We didn't. We didn't have anyone who had the capabilities to really dig in and evaluate the financial performas and budgets of a developer, not only based on the technical background, but and expertise, but also because that information is proprietary. And if someone on staff were to obtain that, it might be subject to FOIA, and we need to be able to respect those, and have a financial third-party unbiased individual who can give us their assessment without jeopardizing that private entity.
And that actually brings me to my next question, which was regarding the, the FOIA aspect of this.
Yes.
So in terms of sort of the public being able to FOIA what NDC is recommending, or is consulting, or is doing, or saying, they won't be able to?
Well, the packets that you saw for 115 East Monroe and the Haney Project on Washington were run through the NDC's process. So that was 50 pages of documentation. There are extensive details that are found within there that are provided by the developers and such, and all of that information is available and was presented to the council and public to make sure that the process was transparent. But staff did not review the detailed financial statements from the developers.
So the NDC reviewed that?
Yes.
And we couldn't FOIA all of that?
I don't believe so, because the city did not obtain that.
Right, and given that the city's, you know, paying for it, and of course, obviously, the taxpayers ultimately are paying for it.
Providing, we're paying for the services and for the expertise, correct? To which the developers would not be willing to work with us if they were to be expected to provide that information directly to us.
Well, I understand that, I understand that. But we don't have to, when we're, when, there's always confidentiality when you're negotiating contracts, clearly.
Certainly.
But to pull in the NDC is, is another layer in that process. Because we've always negotiated contracts, and of course, a lot, there's a lot of confidentiality about that. Thank you.
Let's see, and what are, Alderman, Milawonbue, Lauer, and Schmidt.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Justine. Sorry we're going to lose you, but hopefully, I know you've established a legacy, and the next economic development coordinator will have at least your work, you know, to stand on and to be able to build forward. The question that I have as far as those $60,000, we know what it did in the past, but I'd like to know what is it going to do in the future? So my, my concern is, do we have things in mind already that we know it's, it's going to happen? Or are we, you know, do we stand the risk of losing $5,000 in a month where we're not doing anything?
Certainly. We will not only continue to perform the same set of services that we've already benefited from, including staff, Libby, as, as City Manager Hales had alluded to, is onsite three days a month to meet with developers, business owners, prospective business owners, to help educate them on the process, to help talk to them and provide financial guidance and advice and best practices on ways to go about things. So she will continue to build on, on that approach. She will continue to offer courses, will continue to partner with the Chamber of Commerce to offer courses at little or no cost to entrepreneurs who are looking to broaden their depth. The loan fund that was referred to is, we've received a verbal indication that our application may have been successful, so we're waiting on that final written approval, which would potentially open and unlock 2.5 million dollars in outside external funding sources to be available to small businesses here in the city of Bloomington. And the NDC would serve as the means to evaluate and allocate those funds on an unbiased basis through analyzing their financial performas. So those are just a few of the examples. There will be plenty of work to be done, especially as the position will be vacant. This will offer a sense of continuity in maintaining the incentive guideline that has already been established, which the NDC was part of forming for us. And there will be that, that consistent point of contact, which has already been introduced into the community over the past almost year now.
Alderman Lauer.
Well, I'm, I'm still, just, I don't understand, in a capitalistic environment, we're in the home of the premier insurance and financial services company in the world, why we've got a contract out, and what role is this of government? I just, this is, having been an entrepreneur, I know how to get financing, I know who to go to to, to get those services that I need. I don't understand why government has to be involved in the first place. It just, it just seems well outside the, the auspice of, of the realm in which government should be meddling, quite frankly.
Well, having worked with entrepreneurs, developers, retailers for over six years now, not all of them have the same level of expertise and understanding that you do, Alderman Lauer. They come to me, I get several phone calls a day with business owners on a variety of topics who really don't even know where to start. They need the guidance, they need a five-minute phone call with someone to say, hey, you should really talk to so-and-so, they're, they're, they can unlock the resources that you need. So we do need allies who can serve our constituents, who can serve the people who are looking to start businesses and grow the economy here in Bloomington, and the NDC does that for us. They bring in outside capital, they help stimulate the local economy, and the businesses that have worked with and been associated with the NDC in this community, I am confident would stand behind the continuance of this contract.
Let me also add that, you know, we could go back to doing things the old way. I've looked at so many of these downtown TIF agreements where the city was just handing out money. There was no vetting, there was no performance standards, there was, you know, agreements, never had the kind of scrutiny they needed. And in this day and age, not only are these projects getting more complex, they're also wanting to look at a whole host of different economic development tools, including tax credits and other things, that we just don't have that expertise. And I think the other thing I'd point out, now, nowadays, more and more, there is a critical need to, to evaluate and assess the so-called but-for tests, that this development would not take place but for public assistance being provided. And we don't want to take any applicant or developer's word for it, and there has to be a greater need to get into some very serious, heavy-duty vetting, and these developers can share with the NDC in a very private way, but ensuring that NDC tells us what the true financial condition of these people, when they don't want to do and make that same information publicly available, because they're competing as well. So I think that's just that, it's a different ballgame. I wish the city didn't have to be in the economic development, you know, competition game, but we have to. And, and this is a critical technical resource that we've seen great value with, as many other cities have as well.
Yeah, and again, cities, since they first formed, have been involved in economic development for thousands of years, but...
I understand that. The problem I've got is we just raised everyone's taxes, we made the environment much more difficult to operate, and then we turn right around and spend the money on something like this that's, we can't even measure. I, I've just got a real problem with that, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's see, I think that was, oh, Alderman Sizini, and now Schmidt, okay.
There are three things that I think these folks have brought to the table that I'm aware of, and I imagine, Justine, there are more for you. But we, we have a retail economic development policy now, and I think without them, we might not have that. And I believe that policy is going to do us a world of good going forward, because it's very well-written. It has a clawback section. We didn't have clawback before, and over the three years that I've been on the council, we've talked several times about, gee, this project didn't do very well, can we get money back from whomever? And the answer is, no, we can't. So by adding clawback, I think they probably pay for themselves. What also I like is, many people up here probably never even heard the term leakage before, and leakage is a very important concept. We don't want to be taking advantage of people who have been in the community for years and years, and bring in a competitor, and have not enough business to go around for the new competitor and the people here. If there isn't leakage, we aren't going to be doing incentives. So I use Ashley Furniture as a real good example, because the original agreement didn't have clawback, and I remember talking to the president, saying, we're going to put clawback in, do you agree with that? And he said, I don't have any problem with that, we're going to succeed. And they're going to succeed because there was so much leakage. There was several million dollars of people buying furniture outside of our community, and they were only saying, we want to get about $3 million of that, and there's more than two and a half times that leaving the community. So we, we had clawback, and we had leakage, and we did an incentive, and we're going to do much better attracting customers like that, because this company was here to help us understand those concepts. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Just, just to clarify, even since we've had the announcement of the quarter of a million dollars for the Route 66 Visitor Center in the first floor of the history museum, I've had an unbelievable amount of interest of people who are interested in downtown or near downtown projects and development. And in fact, we've had several, Alderman Sizini and I are going, they don't want to be publicly known yet, but we're going in a couple of days to go to the second round of that. It's just a very, very, very complicated environment where you want to make sure if you have a TIF, that it's real tight and surgical, if you're going to give some sort of rebate back as an incentive for someplace that really will help stimulate your local economy. You want to make sure that those are, are very clear and precise. And anyway, so Alderman Sterns, last word.
Thanks. We, we, you know, I definitely see Alderman Lauer's point, but even if you agree that we need all this expert consulting and, you know, all this help for these entrepreneurs that don't know, you know, what to do, we have the Economic Development Council, and that's $100,000, and then we have unemployed and with pensions and all the benefits, and like I said, Justine, HCGO, but that's another 100,000. So in essence, we've essentially doubled, to me, what we're doing here. And now, here we go again, we hear all the time from our citizens about outside consultants. These people are about as outside as you can get. They're looking nationally, they've got clients, I don't know, we don't have the client list, but the small list we do have is mostly, from what I can see, the two coasts, Fairbanks, Alaska, for crying out loud, you know, we, this is outside. Two Coasts, Fairbanks, Alaska, for crying out loud. You know, we, this is outside, outside consultant. This is not local at all. And, and that, that really concerns, because we have so much local talent that we're not tapping into necessarily. We have bankers, we have all kinds of great people. So this is something, to me, you want to watch government grow, here we go again. And I just, I, I can't support this, because I think we, we already have it, should have it. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to explain that the EDC is not in the retail economic development business, nor do they have the technical expertise to do the kind of credit analysis and the detailed vetting of the finances of applicants like this has. In fact, I would challenge anyone to compare what we have brought to this council on some of our 115 East, Monroe and others, and how we have been very open and transparent with all the data and the analysis done. Try that with any other government in this county, and you will not see anywhere near, not even with the EDC, the type of critical analysis that is going on to help make sure that this council has all the critical factual data to make the best possible decision. You're getting it, these other organizations are not.
Alderman Sage.
Yeah, I, I'll just say very quickly, Justine, I appreciate the emphasis that you've done and David has done, because here's the reality of the situation, regardless of whatever perceptions there are. Because of economic development, we have increased property taxes that come as a result of new businesses coming in. We gather sales tax based on, on the goods and purchases that are purchased in those new businesses. We generate income tax from the payroll that's generated in those new businesses. All of that income is used to take pressure off of the property taxes, for example, that, that the people in Bloomington pay. So I'm very much appreciate the proactive approach we've taken to try to find new, new sources of revenue outside of the property tax and some of the other fees associated with living, you know, living in Bloomington. The economic development emphasis that the city has put on has paid for itself. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Wonder if everyone will vote again. A, I vote, of course, is in favor of this. Okay, the motion carries seven to, Madam Crook, would you please call, or announce the names?
The name votes are Alderman, Lauer and Stern.
Okay. Thank you. And we're gonna go on to a, a brief presentation on Munis, and then pursuant to Alderman Lauer's earlier motion, we will consider item 7D before we move on to the City Manager's discussion.
Mayor Scott Sprouse, our Information Services Director's coming forward. I just wanted to, what the, the catalyst to have this brief presentation tonight is the fact that this Friday and next Monday, we're going to have to undertake a major upgrade to our Munis software system. We wanted to make sure the council and the public were aware of that. There will be some inconveniences. So that's what we initially wanted Scott to present, but he will also just give you a very quick update. As you know, the Munis conversion is a multi-year process. We wanted to just quickly show you what we've accomplished, where we are now, what's coming in the future, and the many, many employees that have spent untold hours dedicated to this conversion. So I'll, again, we wanted to keep this short. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at these slides, and Scott will turn the time over to you.
Thank you, City Manager and Mr. Mayor and Council. I can't blame anyone but myself. I have to get the, the projector turned on. I'm gonna, if I could, I'm gonna step forward to the, to the.
Okay.
My apologies. I think, Karen, if you can, just kind of touch that for me. I think it'll come on. I'm not sure why it's, it's not coming up right now. Again, thank you for the time. And I kind of hope to, what I hope to accomplish was to just kind of do a little, a short refresh on the Munis project itself, its size and scope. Also, maybe an update on kind of where we stand, and then just shine a brief light on, a brief spotlight on some of the city staff that has been really working very hard, you know, with the project to date, and proud of them for their accomplishments. If you, you may remember that the, the project was four phases in, in scope, and, you know, a number of years, you know, through that scope, or through those different phases. Phase one was really the focus on the core financials and the infrastructure itself, you know, the, the base applications, the different kind of systems behind the scene that support, you know, the different workflows and, and things that the, the system has to do. That one started in December 2010, and again, it was the, kind of the, the core of the system. And then really, the kind of the heart of the matter from a, from the Munis software is the financials. All the chart of accounts, general ledger, that sort of thing. The finance folks have worked so hard from, from, really from the beginning. They, honestly, they are, they are never out of it, because everything, all of the modules, you know, sense financials have all tied back into the financial, different modules. So they're, they're never, they never get away from it. A real, a real quick light on Information Services, this is my group. I apologize that we, we kind of put this together towards the, towards the end of, of our submittal time, and I didn't get everyone's picture flashed, but we certainly have a lot of, a lot of people in IS that have been doing a lot of hard work. When these folks are working hard on Munis, there are other IS folks that are kind of filling in, you know, for their absence too. Oops, wrong direction. Also, again, a little, just a kind of brief light on the, the finance folks. We've had so many different finance folks, you know, working very hard through the project. We have functional leads, which, you know, really, that, that kind of, that, that picture there shows you the finance folks that are, are the expert matter, or the, the matter, the subject matter experts in, in their particular modules. They're the people that kind of work with IS, work with the, the Munis folks, the Tyler Technologies implementation folks, and, and really kind of get into the design analysis and setup of the system. But we also have what we call power users. These are the folks that are throughout all the different departments that really are the, you know, the people that drive the, the, the improvements and the setup, and, and hopefully continual improvement, continuing those improvements as we go out, go along using the system. Phase two was payroll and HR. What you'll see, and I've, I've got checkmarks behind, beside the implemented ones. There certainly are some applications here that have been installed that are functional with the Munis system, but for whatever reason, we just, staff just hasn't selected or, or chosen to implement those different pieces yet. Different things might hold those, those things up, but the software is certainly there for our use when we're, when we're ready to, to, to use it. Payroll and HR functional leads, Emily and her group certainly did a lot of work. And again, there's poor Paulette Hurd in finance, she never, she never gets away from it. Power users for phase two, certainly HR and definitely the payroll folks in Finance Department. Phase three was revenue financials and basically the community development type modules and the business license modules. Here is where we've, you know, kind of gotten into permitting inspections and business licensing, that sort of thing. And the functional leads for phase three, a lot of folks in the Community Development Department, certainly, a lot of folks in Public Works. City Clerk definitely was involved with this. The business licensing was a, is a big module for them. So again, just kind of a, a few of the faces that have been working very hard with this project. And again, power users, there are, there are a number of them throughout the, the city. Phase four is, we hope to begin that this summer. Phase four, it really has some of the larger applications. Utility billing is, is kind of a, a big application for us. Inventory, fixed assets, the workflow, the work orders system is kind of what's tying, you know, really, that's gonna be one of those longer-term. That's the thing that we hope saves us a lot of time and effort and really increases the tracking and the accountability and potentially the application of, of, of costs, you know, to the different services that the city might provide. Work orders are gonna be a big one for us. We hope to, again, be, be, begin this summer, and, and it will have to be split up. There's certainly, it's a lot to ask for, you know, the, the current staff to do all of that at one time. So we'll be working on probably a, you know, splitting utility billing up with, and then come back with work orders. And, and the, the work orders kind of goes along with the fixed assets inventory. Certainly are some other modules on there that, that are definitely citizen-facing. The citizen self-service, really, that's that module that would hopefully eventually give us, or will eventually give us that ability for citizens to, you know, enter work orders directly, you know, that sort of thing. Final slide is one about budget. The council authorized for the, for the Munis project, the council authorized roughly 1.8 million. Spend to date is 1.3, meaning we have about 450, 450,000 available. And we are estimating left to spend at 309. So that's actually a positive number there. We, we believe we're gonna, right now, at least, current estimates tell us we're gonna spend $140,000 less than we had originally budgeted. Any questions regarding?
And then if you just kind of go into what's happening Friday and Monday.
I will, yes.
Hold on, let's see if we, any questions? Okay.
Maybe just one that kind of pertains to, you know, what we're gonna vote on here a little bit. It's my perception that some of these modules we've been paying for, we haven't really been using. I'm not blaming anybody, it's just that we haven't quite gotten there yet. And is there some cost savings that we could realize if we don't think that we're gonna fully implement something? If we pared things down a little bit, can we do that? By not paying for modules maybe until next year? Or?
Well, I, the, I guess the short answer is, if we, you know, the fewer modules we implement, definitely the fewer modules we would have to pay maintenance on, software maintenance annually, that sort of thing. We did, the modules that, you know, that you've seen up there, those were the contracted modules, you know, when we originally entered the contract. We did, the, the contract really originally said that, that we wouldn't be paying for these, the maintenance on this software until they're implemented or until a certain date. And unfortunately, with staff turnover and, and certainly the poor finance, finance folks, we've really stressed them out, you know, the last number of years. We did, you know, the, the timeline has definitely slipped, but that, you know, not the, not the project budget. So when the timeline slipped, we went past that time where, you know, we have the software now, the contract said we need to start, you know, paying the, the annual maintenance for those. I can't speak for the different departments that, you know, might be able to determine whether or not, or say whether or not they might use, you know, certain modules. But I, you know, my understanding, Alderman Lauer, is that we definitely intend to use every module up there. You know, we just, it's, it's a, it's a, a resource issue, and we need to kind of, you know, work through the, the implementation for those different departments.
Alderman Milowamboy.
What, what are the, the things that citizens can do with self-service? I'm just curious.
Well, it's, you know, the, the simplest one that everyone run, you know, talks about first is, I want to report a, a pothole. And if I have my smartphone with GPS, I can potentially take a picture and, you know, and, and send this in, and it becomes a work order for Public Works Department, and then it's tracked online, and the citizens can, can view the progress of that, of that repair. Also, those kinds of things, plus many more.
Alderman, Schmidt.
Yes, I have a question actually about implement, the software update and implementation. And you have the FAQ that you provided to us, and there's a lot of information about how online payments can get redirected so people can continue to make their payments. And I'm asking on behalf of people who don't have the capability, they don't have the bank accounts, they don't have whatever to do an online payment. I want, I just want to make sure that they're not going to be penalized in some way with late payments, or how are we gonna handle that?
Sure. I know that's been, it's a topic of conversation, has been for the, the committee that, that City Manager Hales put together for this. I, I do have to defer to Sue McGlocklin at some point, or David, I don't know that you know, but I, I know that we're, that, that we're working on, on, on an answer to that. I don't believe, I can't speak for them, I'm not getting, I'm not getting a nod back there, but I, I don't believe that, that we want to, you know, the system, when it's being down, I don't think that we want to penalize, you know, folks that, you know, that haven't been able to make those payments. Yeah. And again, I'm, I'm speaking a little bit out of turn.
And the answer is yes. We're trying to make sure we're doing everything possible so that those people don't get penalized. But it's still a work in progress. Sue, is there anything else you want to come and add on that topic?
Yeah. I also spoke with Craig, and the way the billing period is falling, it doesn't appear that anybody is going to be penalized. We're actually hitting it at a very precise time. But if we find that there are any issues that we're unaware of, we will certainly take care of them.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else for us, Scott?
Nope. I just wanted to, up on the screen, I do have that frequently asked questions document. And it, it does, within the document, it does have links, hot links to paying either your city services bill or your parking tickets online. The, and, and again, the, the document is pretty complete, but I believe that it also says that the, during those couple of days, citizens won't be able to purchase the garbage bag stickers also. So those, kind of the three, city services bill, parking tickets and garbage bag stickers that will be affected. You know, city services and parking tickets will be limited strictly to online, but you can still pay them.
Alderman Sage.
Just, just a quick comment, and I know I've said this before, Scott, but again, having been through a PeopleSoft and enterprise implementation at State Farm, I know I've kind of contrasted, you actually had two different teams at State Farm. You had a dedicated project team that implemented, and, and as well as then the, the support staff that kept all the other wheels on. And, and so what you've done here is, and I know you have some dedication of resources, but, but we've asked staff across the entire city to kind of wear both of those hats at the same time, as opposed to having the luxury of being pulled out of their day-to-day work and handling all of the, you know, the minute-by-minute decisions that have to be made, as well as working through the, the implementation of, of the new software. And so there, there's a large, a big shout-out that's due, you know, to our IT staff and the rest of our staff across the city, because those are two very difficult hats to wear at the same time. And I know that, because I do have expertise in enterprise software, and I know how that works. And, and so what, what you've done here, what our folks have done, is, is really quite remarkable.
Thank you, Alderman. It's, it is a citywide effort, to say the least.
Thank you. Actually, you may want to just stay here in case, I don't know that there will be any questions, as we go on to item 7D. And this was the item that Alderman Lauer had polled, and we had now slated for consideration. And where? Flipped my things around here, I'm sorry. Ah, thank you. And this is a payment for renewal of software maintenance agreement to Tyler Technologies for various Munis modules. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I need to, the, the man behind the curtain is up here standing right now.
Oh, so you need to go back and shift so we can actually go and vote? Then by all means, do that. Yes, thank you.
I'll be right back.
Don't vote yet. Do I press display off then? It's not, oh, just to show timer in voting? Oh, oh, there we are, okay. I recognize this screen, okay. Anyway, if, an I vote, of course, is in favor of this. Thank you. All right. The motion carries. All right, the motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce. And now we will move to the city manager's discussion. Mr. Hales, do you have anything to bring to our attention?
Very much so, Mayor and city council. I just want to recognize tonight that tomorrow is the last day for Justine Robinson. She's been with us two and a half years. I think as what was mentioned earlier, not only did Justine fill our first economic development coordinator position, her success and all that she's accomplished in the past two and a half years have just been phenomenal. She helped develop their first economic development strategy incentive policy, incentive application. Have been very instrumental, went 115 East Monroe, Ashley Furniture, as well as the Hy-Vee grocery store, which is under construction. And if, if anything, I just think it's very important to share with you the positive and the collaborative relationship she has formed with many, many individuals and agencies throughout this community and the entire region has just been outstanding. She's helped given presentations, both at IML and others, and we just owe her a very great gratitude for the service she has given in such a short period of time. So I'd like you to join me in thanking Justine for her service over the last two and a half years, if you would.
Thank you, Justine.
Mayor, I'd also like to just give you an update. You might recall that we had to move forward with an emergency replacement of the chiller at the police department. Just heard this morning that that chiller's gonna be delivered June 21st. This has been on an extraordinarily short timeline. In fact, it'll be delivered hoisted in the place over the weekend, trying to do everything we can to cut corners, to help make sure that this can get put in operational. We've kind of stabilized it for the present time, so that's ongoing as well as the fire sprinkling system, emergency water system for the police. City hall roofing project continues to go well. If we can just keep avoiding these downpours, we have some, some water get into the city hall again over the weekend and as many of you have seen.
And the noise will be very nice to have go away.
I think also as reported in the paper, there was a, a critical plea agreement entered into by the state's attorney's office with a former employee of the city. I think that goes to show again, some outstanding efforts by many, many people, starting with our finance director, accounting chief, some people who are very instrumental in some forensic accounting, former investigator for the police department, the state's attorney's office and many others. I think this just goes to show that not only do we take, you know, honesty, integrity as a critical core value for all our employees, we also, I think it's, it's, I think something to mention over the past five years, we've significantly raised the bar on the critical competency and technical skills, accounting skills of our finance staff. And I just couldn't be more impressed with and thankful for the progress they have made and that the increased internal controls. That doesn't mean that we're where we want to be, but just the progress we have made and Munis, the Munis software itself is an integral part to helping us achieve greater internal controls. I can't begin to tell you what was some of the weaknesses we had with the old legacy system and having all these spreadsheets and everything else out there. So it's a, I, I think we're very pleased with that. We'll be having some more discussion with you in the future. And then just, just to mention, we're working on a couple of things for next Monday. The final report on the hotel, downtown hotel feasibility study will be delivered to you shortly. We'll have a final presentation on that. We have some railroad topics to talk about. Union Pacific is, is doing a lot of work in the city, but as well as the town. We think it's helpful to bring you up to date on what's being done, how our engineers are working both with IDOT, Union Pacific, some Norfolk Southern topics. And then finally, I'm working with the directors to kind of put together a preview of the council's policy agendas over the next 11 months of this fiscal year. The one thing we do want to continue to help give you as best we can is, is some preview of what things are coming up, how we would, you know, critical issues, it's gonna take your time and attention to vote to and so be watching for that over the next 30 to 60 days as we try to, again, keep you in, in mind of some of these upcoming issues, including issues related to next year's budget and a couple of ideas that are being talked about by the mayor and several of the aldermen and some of you may want to comment on that. With that, that's all I had to report on tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And just a, a few things as I had mentioned in our earlier discussion, certainly since we've got the quarter of a million dollar funding gap grant from the state for the Route 66 visitor center, there's been lots of interest and ideas or new energy, lots of inquiries, meetings, and these are much more serious than I think most of the ones that I've had over the last year and a month or so. And also some new exciting ideas. Donnie Herron, for example, had a great idea of possibly opening up the old Route 66, which would basically mean we'd have to just go through the parking lot. The county, of course, may not be quite as happy about that, but we'll, we're, we're working on that. So thank you, Donnie. Also, we had a Route 66 cruise-in on Saturday afternoon. The problem was, it was really well attended and then about 45 minutes in, there was a downpour. So unfortunately, we can't control the weather, but we certainly can move forward on economic development in our community and specifically downtown. And just as an FYI, I was very pleased to see that a comic book store has opened in the 400 block of downtown Bloomington. I also want to thank John Kennedy. Thank you for having the, the first open house where the department heads have presented and every month or so. We, we may give the summer off, but maybe as of August, September, begin to have some of the other department heads come through and explain some of what they're, they're doing to, to the citizens. Thank you, John. I very much appreciate that. And once again, thank you, Justine. And that's all I have. And who'd like to, I'll just go from my left to right. Alderman Zizini.
Two things. One, in addition to the Route 66 cars that were here on Sunday, we had over 100 cars that were of British type over at the David Davis mansion and that was very well attended. And we made a joint proclamation between the town of Normal and the city of Bloomington, which worked out real well. 16 years ago, I think, we had the first State of McLean County talk by Dr. Ed Charlo from Champaign-Urbana. And he came back and was invited 15 years ago and 14 years ago and on. I don't know anyone who has been invited back 16 straight years to talk about our county and his unique perspective. It's a tribute to the quality of his presentation and how much you can learn about our county from somebody who looks at it differently than all the rest of us. Tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock at the Hanson Center at Illinois Wesleyan University, Dr. Charlo will be making his presentation for the 16th straight year. I would encourage everybody in the room who wants to know more about our county to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman, excuse me, Sterns.
Thank you. A question for city manager Hales regarding the April 14th meeting at which several people were not here. I think there were just five of us or something, there was just a quorum. But anyway, there was a commitment and I do have the minutes here, if anybody is interested, that we would be getting, let me see, Mr. Hales, believe these issues would be resolved in, in 60 days, that you would be bringing back the issues to resolve the Coliseum contract, particularly the issues that were, seemed to be of deep concern to the auditors, that, you know, we really hadn't defined all of the commissions back to the city and that they had changed and et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to see, now that that 60 days is almost up, when, and when the council will actually have a chance to, when the transparency about all this will be revealed, not just for the council, but for the citizens? And the council will be voting on something. When, when will that happen?
Well, thank you. Yeah, we, with Jeff Jurgens, we are in communication both with SIAM, their principals and their attorney. We're working through trying to come up with a contract amendment or something else that would rectify and make very clear what is currently two provisions in that agreement that are working to the city's favor. As you may recall, commissions, SIAM's taking less commissions as agreed to in the agreement. And the other issue is really a known, really an issue that is not having any financial impact. So these are, and the, auditors always will bring forward recommendations, things to resolve. These are two items we're working on and will be bringing back contract amendment, you know, and our deadline is by the end of June 30th and that we're working towards trying to have something completed and at least email to the council and bring him back to July for your approval.
I think our tentative goal there was the 23rd of June, the 23rd meeting, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought it was the 30th.
Just, just so I understand.
No, the, the last meeting.
So if I understand what you're saying.
I had to get a few more days.
If I understand what, what your comment, that, I just want to clarify the comment I think I just heard. So you're saying that the city is actually getting more commission or, or at a financial advantage to Central, is that what you're saying, to Central Illinois Arena Management? Is that a definite?
Exactly, yes. As John Butler and them have indicated, they could have been requesting more than they're actually because they felt they weren't justified or it wasn't because of various situations, they didn't feel it was right to take the full commission. So the city's been benefiting financially, but what we need to do is just to codify that and put that in writing. The other thing just had to do with where was half of the $1 parking fee going into, and we've had a lot of changes in our general ledger and things like that. So again, it's, it's no loss to the city, but both these things we're just trying to work towards, to try and clarify so that both parties can amend the agreement and be very clear going forward, you know, codifying those things in writing.
And we'll have a chance to look at all that, the council.
Yes, those two items.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this point, do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Lombe, is there a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Alderman favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, I, I have a 1:30.